Okay, we want to welcome everyone to our first meeting in March. It's five o'clock and we'll go ahead and we'll call this meeting to order. If everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb?
Here.
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 Okay, we do have a quorum. Entertaining motion then to approve today's agenda, so move. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Deb?
Yes.
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 Motion carried. Thank you. Across the mayor's desk, I want to this evening thank Shay Tilges for being our videographer. And just want to acknowledge all the great things that are happening in Algonah with our youth. We certainly want to congratulate the Bishop Garrigan girls' basketball team for becoming state champions. And that was, those of you that watched the game, that was rather a heart-stopping last game. But we're happy that they won. But also, just this past weekend, we had state qualifiers and swim meets. There's been music programs, pop concerts in both schools this past week. So just a lot going on. And just encourage everyone to be watching, watchful of those and congratulate the teachers and the kids and coaches and everybody that's been involved. So it's just an exciting time to be in Algonah right now. Counsel, have anything they would like to share? Okay, here and then, an update from the city administrator.
All right, got a few items tonight on the update. First, I'd like to bring up Lori Walton, our library director, introduce a new children's librarian.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Lori.
Good to see you again. I am very happy, as you can tell, to introduce you to Brianna Temple. She started with us last week, last Wednesday. And we are so very pleased to have her with us as a new children's librarian. I'll let her tell you a little bit about herself.
As Lori said, I'm Brianna. I am from Wyoming, Colorado. And so I was definitely new to me, but I'm really excited. I was a middle school art teacher for a while. I also work in a school library as well as a public library. I am currently on my, I'm currently completing my masters of library science with the youth services concentration. So I'm really excited to put my expertise that I learned at school into this position.
Good.
Great.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
So it's a great time of the season to have a new children's librarian with our summer programs coming up. So one opportunity for people to see the new face in town, as I'm sure they'll be seeing a lot of with all the great programs the library offers. Next, Joanne, have to, it's nice just to farm these out.
Jacob enjoys delegating some of these announcements, don't you, Jacob? Well, my first slew of announcements are on behalf of Nick Deers, our Parks and Rec. Has a bunch of fun activities coming up, that some of them happen this spring, some of them happen this summer, but it's time to sign up for them right now. And so a couple of those are coed spring soccer for youth. And that's for kids that are third through sixth grade. We have previously had older kids, seventh and eighth grade. That is not the case this year. It's just that third through sixth. So get signed up by March 11th. It's $20. Bring your own cleats and your own water bottle, and we provide the shin guards. And that's been kind of a fun and growing program. So if you have a child at your house that loves to play soccer, just likes to kick things, bring him over for that. Also, the same deadline, March 11th, for summer in baseball and softball. And so sometimes it's a little harder since the program doesn't actually start until the end of April or May to think, why do I have to sign up so early? Well, you just do. So, and so it's $25 if you sign up by Friday. It's gonna be $5 more if you wait, so you might as well get that done. So that is coming, and there's a great baseball softball tradition here as we look forward to that. And that's for kids second through sixth grade, so time to get that signed up. And you can sign up online. We've had a couple people have trouble with that. We have paper signups as well. We're kind of hoping that all that Bishop Garrigan and Algonah basketball action will lead people to sign up for the alumni basketball tournament. And only do it if you're not gonna hurt yourself, right, Paul? It's a lot of fun.
Dads and grads will be there.
Dads and grads will be there. It's a lot. It's a great tradition. If you're an alumni of one of those schools and you'd like to put together a team, you can sign up online. You can stop by the office. And that's just years and years of fun tradition there. I believe this is the 18th year. Can somebody confirm that? Deb's kind of nodding. We're pretty sure that's right, 17th or 18th. Nick is very excited about that, so if you have questions, Nick Deers is your guy. We're trying a new event called Family Dodgeball Night. We're very excited about this. It is a one-nighter. You know, sometimes we all have a lot of things going on. Committing to a six-week program is too much. But committing to one night of fun, we can handle that. So March 21st is Family Dodgeball Night. It's for all ages. We don't even know all the fun we're gonna have, but we do know this, you have to wear clean shoes. If you're under 12, you have to show up with an adult chaperone. But otherwise, it's just gonna be a free-for-all. Nick's got a lot of plans. He's thinking dads versus moms. He's thinking kids versus parents. He said, maybe it's just everyone against everyone. We think it's gonna be a lot of fun. Come with a high tolerance for chaos, is my only recommendation. But it's gonna be really good. So we're looking forward to that. We're also talking with our Aquatic Center staff about it's time to get some summer staff hired for the pool. So we're specifically looking for lifeguards. We're looking for concession stand workers, people to work that front desk. So if you're looking for a fun summer seasonal job where you can be with other people on that team, we're hiring right now, and the deadline is April 1st. So that's coming up. That's kind of the Parks and Rec stuff. And I wanted to touch really quick on community visioning. Thanks to everybody who participated in those community focus groups. We talked a lot about getting people there, and people came, and I just really appreciated that. We had 40 people come and participate that morning, and great feedback, great ideas. The goal was really to start gathering input on what are some of the barriers for transportation around Algonah? And what are some of the really good things? We got a lot of feedback. We kind of targeted older adults over age 65. We looked at people who had lower mobility. We talked with parents. We talked with active recreationists, and then we had our local steering committee participate as well. But it was a very productive morning, and we got a lot of data. So the next step is we have Iowa State interns who are kind of crunching all that data for us. They will bring us a report to review, looking for trends, looking for information that can help us build some goals and some plans. It is a long process. We anticipate it'll take about six weeks for them to pull that data together. In the meantime, we'll be doing some other meetings and some other planning. So keep staying tuned to that. You can look for updates on that, and some of these other updates are in our latest edition of the Neighborhood News, which just went out on the website and Facebook today, so if you'd like to read that, it is out there. Under community links, it's also pushed out on our social media. So if there's any questions about any of those things?
Just wondered about the location on some Central Park. Is that still where soccer is? I know some has tore up, so I didn't know if that would affect anything.
You know what? That's a great question. I'll have Nick answer that one for you. I believe it is still there, but you're gonna have to check with Nick Deers on that one as far as location.
Then the other one.
There's plenty of space there, isn't there?
Yeah, there is. So it might still be there.
Sure.
The dodgeball being new, where's that gonna be?
That's gonna be at Algonah High School. Yep, so it'll be at Algonah High. And that's why they said, please wear your clean shoes. We want to keep that place. And we don't want to track, it's muddy season as well, as well as summer season. So that's where that one will be, Algonah High.
I think we.
Thank you for pointing that out. That one is completely free, and you don't even have to tell us you're coming. It's RSVP, because it's hard, yeah, no RSVP, because I know sometimes you don't even know what your schedule's gonna be until it gets to be that time. So we just really want people to come, have a good night. And if it's a success, we might do a couple of them next year.
Well, it sounds like a good preparation, like, for that would be like to watch Dodgeball the movie and get warmed up on it.
Or just doing some moving around so you're ready, you know? I'd recommend that. It'd be a great practice regimen for you, Harley. Any other questions?
And that's at seven o'clock?
That's at 6:30, and we're running about an hour, which is.
You don't want to practice with Rento.
I'm gonna practice with Harley.
You don't have to practice to show up, but you know, you have to just get ready, get mentally prepared. All right, any other questions for me? All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
As Joanne mentioned, we are already now advertising and hiring for lifeguards for the upcoming summer. In addition, we are, have our jobs posted for the summer public works and parks positions as well, so that we're accepting applications for those. And then finally, just want to give an update on the progress at the Teets Park Shelter House. The interior is more or less done. The kind of the big item that we're waiting on right now is for temperatures to warm up so we can finish the exterior work. Last fall, when they began finishing the block, there were some issues with the stain that went on there. So we've got a new subcontractor lined up, same construction does. So the last big task on that will be cleaning the stain off the block that we have right now, then refinishing it. So I just want to let people know if they walk by and see kind of different colors and different sections and have concerns that that is going to be addressed. We're just one of those things that we're waiting for, the temperatures to warm up, to be able to do that work. But we're hoping that the shelter house will be all wrapped up here, weather pending, here in April.
Very good. Okay, thank you. We'll move to agenda. I am number seven. This is the citizen's opportunity to address the council with any item that is not on today's agenda. Is there anyone here in the council chambers that would like to speak? Seeing none, is there anyone on the phone? Okay. Okay, we'll move then to agenda item number eight, which is the consent agenda. And that includes approving the minutes from our last city council meeting on February 21st. Approve the bills to be paid this cycle. Approve a Class C beer permit for Algonah Classic Stop. Approve a Class E liquor license to Akron Stop, and approve Jacob's administrator's report.
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Hearing and vote please, Deb?
Yes.
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 Motion carried. Agenda item number nine, then under new business, this is an ordinance, the third reading, an ordinance amending the zoning map.
This ordinance amended the zoning classification of a priority located at 508 Eastern Braker Street from single-family RS-60 to multifamily RM-2. This is their reading consideration.
Motion to waive the third reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the third reading. Any discussion? Roll call, Deb?
Yes.
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 Tyler? Yes.
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 Motion carried then to waive that third reading.
Motion to approve the third reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve that third reading on this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Hearing and vote please, Deb?
Yes.
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 Motion carried.
I think the last thing is the motion to adopt the ordinance amending the zoning map.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Don, to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion? Roll call, Deb?
Yes.
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 Motion carried. Agenda item number 10, this is the third reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of 100th Avenue.
As part of the upcoming runway extension at the airport, a section of 100th Avenue, which runs north and south just east of the airport, is to be vacated. This is the third reading of the ordinance.
Make a motion to waive the third reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the third reading. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb?
Yes.
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 Tyler?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move to approve the third reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the third reading. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb?
Yes.
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 That motion carried.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance vacating 100th Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing and vote please, Deb?
Yes.
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 Tyler?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 11 is an ordinance amending the municipal code. This is the first reading.
This ordinance relates to the appointment of officials. And it can kind of be just subject as a general, just kind of housekeeping ordinance amendment. So there's kind of three items that I want to point out that this ordinance amendment does. It's first, it adds the Chapter Two, the council appointments, as well as the Chapter Two mayoral appointments. Currently, throughout our code section, the various sections establishing the board or the position declares how the position is appointed. We'll keep those, but in talking with our city attorney, we thought it'd be nice to put them basically in one centrally located spot. These are the mayoral appointments. These are the council appointments. So majority of these changes are just putting them in there. It's for the record, even though there's no substantive change. A few items that are otherwise, that is on council appointment. It removes the superintendent of public improvement, as well as the appointment of the sewer superintendent. And we'll give you that in a moment. And then on the mayoral appointments, it removes the Board of Electrical Examiners, which the city no longer has, as well as the Playground and Recreation Commission, which was some old language that was in there before the Parks and Rec commissions were merged. And then it also adds the Housing Commission, which is already appointed by the mayor. Then in Chapter 13, or Section Three of the ordinance, on the superintendent. Currently, our city code states that the sewer superintendent, which is Mark Lenz, is appointed by the city council in reviewing just kind of how we have that system set up. You know, when Mark retires and you have to replace that position right now, it would be that, you know, we'd have an interview team, we'd make an offer on a position that it'd have to be contingent upon then going to city council in a public meeting and saying, this is the candidate, yea or nay. It's a very technical position, so our recommendation as staff is just to move that under similar other positions that it'd be hired by the city administrator supposed to that particular position coming before the council for formal approval. So the Chapter 13, which is amended, the powers and duties are still the same. We just took out the section that stated that it's appointed by the city council and will not just be appointed by the city administrator as other positions are.
Well, following that summary, I would hopefully waive the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. A second from Don to waive that first reading. Any discussion? Hearing and vote please, Deb?
Yes.
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 Tyler? Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Move to approve the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Don to approve that first reading. Any discussion? Hearing and vote please, Deb?
Yes.
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 Tyler?
Yes.
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 Motion carried. Agenda item number 12, this is the first reading of an ordinance amending the municipal code.
This one relates to parking on Moore Street, specifically between the blocks of Nebraska and Braker. As we were planning the street project for this year, we realized that we had one final item on last year's reconstruction project that we had to address. So Moore Street, and that was reconstructed, it's a 26-foot wide street. And as we were going through design and talking to the adjacent owners, one of the things that came up was concerns on parking and just the likelihood of accidents with the angle parking in front of, or next to the current area of Crest Funeral Home and the parallel parking on the east side there. So when we looked at the street widths and what was, could be accommodated, that parallel parking, there certainly wasn't room for. So that street was designed, it was intended that we wouldn't have parallel parking on the east side anymore. So that would be otherwise, you're only going to get a car there. It's only 26 feet wide. Basically turns it into a one-way road. So this ordinance extends the prohibition of parallel parking on the east side of the street. That currently extends from the Braker to Overmeyer up one block.
As I recall, that street doesn't seem that often. People parked parallel on that side anyway, so.
Just be a bowl, I mean, wake maybe. I've seen it a few times.
But there's no painting on the street yet, is there? Or hasn't been painted for parallel?
No, it hasn't been painted.
Okay.
And we didn't put a sign either way back on, you see, you know, have parking, except for these hours. And so now we're putting a new sign up, just with no parking on that side.
I moved to waive the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Rodney to waive that first reading. Any discussion? Hearing and vote please, Deb?
Yes.
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 Tyler?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move to approve the first reading?
Second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Rodney to approve that first reading. Any discussion? Hearing and roll call, Deb?
Yes.
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 Tyler?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 13, this is a resolution pertaining to Phillips and McCoy Street and Call Street parking lot reconstruction.
Yep, so this resolution does a number of things. It stays in the upcoming reconstruction projects that we have coming here in 2022. So the focus of this resolution is the five blocks of North McCoy Street, from Poplar Street to Highway 18. Five blocks of North Phillips Street, from North Street to Pine Street. And then the downtown parking lot on the corner of Call and Moore Street. Those projects are being packaged together into one that will be bid. And so this resolution approves the plans, specifications, and contract for that project, as well as orders, the notes to bidders, and setting a public hearing. So the current timeline that we're looking at is posting the advertising for bids later this week. Bids will be open on March 29th, and then on April 4th, there'll be a public hearing on the plans, specifications, and cost estimate, and then have you anticipate awarding project contract. Matt Cole with Holden Lake, who got to see a number of meetings here from last year. He's got to give an idea. Have any kind of questions on scope of the project, timing, kind of like, things like that? Thank you, Jacob.
Yeah, Jacob pretty much summarized everything with the resolution, the bid date, and the contract award, public hearing date for the next council meeting, the first council meeting in April. So I guess if there's any specific questions you had or concerns.
One question I had, just thinking about North McCoy, working on that. Kind of have an isolated section north of Garrigan to Highway 18. Do you have any thoughts on how you're going to provide access there while we're working on the street?
Yep, yeah, we do have a phasing plan for both projects. We've summarized the Phillips one a few times, keeping Elm Street or Oak Street open at all times. We're gonna do the same thing with Maple and Mound. So they're gonna need to maintain access there. There's really no, there's no access to the Eastland Hill Mall. That's not directly off of McCoy Street. So we're gonna utilize, I can't remember what that little gravel street is behind it.
Clark.
Clark Street, yes. We're gonna utilize that to get access to the mall at all times, along with the businesses and the apartments that are also kind of on the east side of McCoy Street, so.
So either Round or Maple, well, generally one of those will be open throughout the project. And Phase One, which is front of Garrigan, that also has a few specific items in terms of start date. Not working on the graduation weekend and then being done before school starts.
Yep.
Hope for good weather this summer, because that's a tight schedule there.
Yep, there's a lot of work to do, but anticipating it can all get done in one construction season, so.
Close to Harley, those businesses are kind of isolated around Highway 18. We have signs up telling them how to get to those businesses to assist, because we don't want the mall and handouts to those businesses to get to this project.
Okay.
Deb, we know, you know, obviously, this area here, as well as with the downtown, the Call and Moore Street parking lot will have impacts as well. We do plan on putting together just kind of a simple flyer that we can get out to the public here coming up in the next month or so, just letting people know that this will be happening so they can just kind of get that in their head. And then once we have, you know, we know we have a general contract for it, we can talk with them on timeline. We'll, you know, kind of get that word out against people who know that those businesses are open. We'll just have to make accommodations. And then as with last year's project, Holden Lake will have a website for that set up that people can review or sign up for text or email notifications. So there will definitely be a lot of just kind of communication throughout this process to let people know the alternatives for business parking, in terms of the parking.
Yeah, we'll run them, we'll maintain the website and the basic communications that they want to email or text if they choose to sign up for that.
Do you know on the south end of McCoy, if that intersection, is that Oka Street or whatever there? Will that be interrupted, or?
Poplar Street.
Maybe it's Poplar, there you go.
Yeah, Poplar Street is the through street, so we are gonna be doing utility work in that intersection. There's sanitary, there's storm sewer and water main in that intersection. So that street will be closed for a while. Once we get the underground work done, we are gonna gravel it and temporarily open it back up for traffic until we get paving. But there will be kind of a couple of weeks of closure for the underground, and then another probably a week or maybe two weeks of closure for pavement construction on that street. We're gonna try and phase everything in that phase to be done before school starts, so that's the intent there.
Okay.
I don't know if this has come up in conversations with AMU yet about the Call Street parking. So we're putting in like those kiosks where they can plug in their cars, the electric cars?
Yep.
How do those work? Do people like pay for their charge, like with their credit card or something like that?
I guess I'm not.
Putting quarters or something?
I'm not 100% sure on the specific model that they chose, but they do have credit card readers on, typically.
Okay.
Or you have a phone app that you pay it through the app.
Okay.
It's one of the two options.
Something like that.
I'm not sure which specific model they ended up going with, but.
Something like that. Just curious.
Yeah, so in coordinating those electric charging stations with AMU, the plan is there'll be two of those in the southeast corner of that parking lot. And then the capacity down for the conduits or down the road at, if and when demand warrants and we want to add charging stations to the north, we can easily do that. And then AMU will, we did have to lose an additional parking spot. AMU will need to add a transformer there, because their current one is full. So we, yeah, we're to start, we'll just have the two electric charging stations. And yeah, as Max said, I know AMU, they're planning on maybe some system with like a credit card or a rack based on paying for those. And then just while we're on it, kind of, there's another graphic that, let's take the time. I won't try to find it at this moment, but up here, we're going, this will be a bump out along Call Street. It will be quite elongated east-west relative to our other bump outs. And the pavers and plantings will be styled the same as we have on Dodge Street. And then kind of that additional section or area to the west will have space to do, to mount some bike racks and or have some benches there as well. So the, just with the spacing and the two dots effects that Matt can articulate with where we have the driveway, would you plan to eliminate that parallel parking on the north side of Call Street there? So this is kind of one of the ways we can put that space back to some usable areas since we're not parking there anymore for site reasons.
As long as those benches are not in line of traffic sight vision, you know? Because Call Street is just such a great, you know, when you're looking to the left and trying to get on that street. I mean, have you thought about that a little bit, too?
Yeah.
When I'm trying to get on the Call Street, coming from my hairdresser, it's just hard to take a left on there, so just keep that in mind.
Yep.
Just saying.
I think that's going to be something that's installed after the product.
Yeah.
If the bike racks and the benches are not going to be part of the product, there's just going to be a space to utilize them in the future for most amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
A motion to approve the resolution.
Second. We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Brad. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number fourteen. This is a resolution acknowledging repayment and release of a mortgage.
Emeralds LLC had an emergency RLO from the city back in 2020, which is part of the program for the city. It's set up in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. They have paid the balance of the loan. So this resolution reflects that and then authorizes the release of the loan security.
I'll move to approve the resolution. Second.
We have a motion from Tyler, a second from Don. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried, and thank you, Emeralds, for making those payments. Agenda item number fifteen is a resolution authorizing release of mortgage.
This is for a mortgage that was on a forgivable loan from the two thousand seven Community Development Block Grant CBT Housing Rehabilitation Program. The terms on that, I believe it was only three years, three or five was the period that the loan would be forgiven. So it's certain past that deadline that this is for our Blackburn property they have that had participated in the program. And then just as an FYI, we have gone through and identified, I think we have eight others that have participated in this program that there's still a mortgage on those when it was set up. They've all been forgiven, so we just need to kind of go through and release them. So we expect that one of the upcoming council meetings, we'll have a resolution releasing the rest of them so we don't have these come up every so often.
Motion to approve the resolution authorizing release of mortgage.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number sixteen is a resolution authorizing release of mortgage.
Gloria McQuity obtained a housing revolving loan fund, a loan through the city, and she has paid out the balance of that loan. So this resolution acknowledges that and approves the release of the mortgage.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Brad. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, and thank you, Lori, for making those payments. So agenda item number seventeen. This is a resolution approving the union contract.
This resolution approves a union agreement for the city and the apps to the public works union. This is a two-year agreement running from July one, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The agreement maintains a number of the employment terms that previously bid in the agreement, as well as establishes wage rates for the next two years. I haven't answered any questions with those things specific.
Okay. Hearing none, entertain a motion then to approve that resolution.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Jody. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number eighteen. This refers a number of items to the planning and zoning commission.
Given the variety and the different directions you could possibly go, we didn't go to the effort, like in the fancy ordinance language format, but this refers a number of items to planning zoning for their study and to come back to council for recommendation. We had a property here over the last few months that was a vacant residential property that used for a garden. And our current ordinance, in order to have an accessory building, you have to have a primary building on there. And so it does not allow for, they would like to see like a garden shed on that property. Did the interpretation of the zoning code, or given the board of adjustment, go out to really appeal the zoning administrator, which is part of interpretation of the zoning code, but the board of adjustment also approved a motion asking the city look at an ordinance change that would allow on some level of, you know, reasonable accommodation on, you know, having a garden shed or something like that on a vacant lot. So then it's kind of what the primary driver which led to this referral and then in reviewing that, a few other items came up. And so we provide for a definition of crop production, as well as a formal definition of fence, which currently our zoning code does not have, as well as on the residential multi, single-family, multi-family who proposed that allowing a garden shed, which would be a new term, a new definition. But those would be allowed by special exception, meaning that you have to go to board of adjustment for formal approval. And then as well as moving horticulture and crop production to special exception for those uses as well.
You said the garden shed does come with a description. I mean, I wouldn't want one of those metal storage containers being called a garden shed.
So right now, the definition we have as a garden shed means a portable structure less than one hundred and twenty square feet, which has no utilities connected. And this is something I'm sure, you know, between work at the commission, as well as even when it comes back to council, I'll have a discussion on is that we're trying to find that balance of not allowing any use that, you know, it's own residential, the intent is that it's being built as residential. We don't want to turn it. You could put garages up, and then it just kind of turns into a hobby area, but. So we're looking at something that is portable, it doesn't have permit utilities run to it. You know, for the siding, you have to, you know, still comply with setbacks. So it's something that we think that while these lots are not yet developed, and if they are, you know, using it as a garden just to help maintain the lot, you know, providing a substantial structure that they can keep equipment on the site, but doing so in a manner that doesn't really push the site into a use that's not really intended for as the zone residential. So this item is just a referral to planning, zoning, and we'll come back with a recommendation at a later date.
Motion to approve, referring to planning and zoning.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody to refer this to planning and zoning. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. That'll be referred then to planning and zoning. Agenda item number nineteen. This is to set a public hearing.
We need to have a public hearing on our proposed budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. This is the post-public hearing notice. It is approved. It will be published this Thursday. And then the public hearing will be held on March twenty-first at five P M. here at Street Council Chambers.
Move to set the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion from Don, a second from Jody to set the public hearing for Monday, March the twenty-first, five P M. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number twenty is to approve a pay application.
This is pay application number four from Jensen Builders for the airport hangar extension project. And my administrators, or my council member, has the total number without the amount due retained subtracted out. So the amount due with this estimate is forty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars and thirty-eight cents. There was an initial walkthrough on the project last week, and we anticipate accepting the project and approving final payment and retainage sometime in April. Really the only remaining element is just the basic site restoration and some seating.
Motion to approve pay application.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody to approve this pay application. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number twenty-one is also to approve a pay application.
This is pay application number eight from Sand Construction for the Teets Park Shelter House project. Payment due is twenty-five thousand, six hundred fifty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. The engineer, excuse me, the project architect has reviewed and recommends approval.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Brad, a second from Tyler to approve this pay application. Any discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number twenty-two. This is an appointment to the tree board. We do have a vacancy there. Is there anyone, contacted anyone about the tree board? Okay. That is a three-year term. And then agenda item number twenty-three. This is the final notification of vacancy of an appointment to the library board of trustees due to Dave Skilling's resignation, and this is a mayoral appointment. And I've been in a conversation with Lori Walton, and Bryce Gadberry's name has come forth. And Lori certainly, certainly recommended Bryce. He is a user, current user of the library, and I know he has had leadership in other areas. And I feel good also to recommend Bryce Gadberry for the library board of trustees, so I would recommend his appointment. Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just wanted to clarify, this will be for the remainder of Dave Skilling's term, which expires this year on June thirtieth, so we'll have to do.
Do this again.
If you want.
Okay. Okay, vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you very much, and thank you, Bryce, for stepping forward and volunteering to be on the library board. And our final item then is the final notification of vacancy and appointment of the board of adjustment. This is Jim Buscher's term has expired. So is anyone visited with anybody about the board of adjustment term?
I haven't, but we got two leadership class guys back there that maybe they can take back. Maybe they wanted them, or maybe they'd want to take back and see if they can help us with that class.
Okay, very good. Okay, it is five forty-five, and brings us to the end of our agenda, and I would entertain a motion then to adjourn.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.